Good evening. The time is now 7:00 PM. That was the alarm. The time is now 7:00 PM and I call to order the meeting of the Urbana City Council. Today is Monday, May 12th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Hersi.
Here.
Councilmember Colasetti.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin.
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Here. All right, thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes for April 21st, 2025, Committee of the Whole, May 5th, 2025, Special City Council, and May 5th, 2025, Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Jaya, seconded by Sharice. Are there any additional changes?
I just want to make a note that it was brought to my attention that there were individuals listed as anonymous and I'm going to triple check when I go back and listen that a name was not stated. This is also a general reminder to the public that you are not required to provide your name when you give public input. That is your right to remain anonymous, but if you state your name, we will state your name in the record, so I will just triple check that they didn't state their name.
All right, I can move. I don't need to do anything more with that. All right. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Sorry, I, we do need to vote to approve the minutes.
We need to vote to approve amendments. All right. With that in favor, do I have all those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All the polls, say nay. All right, the ayes have it. All right, and that motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda at this time? All right, seeing none, we will now move on to presentations and public input. I will go ahead and read the proclamation.
Well, we do have one email from public comment if you want to. Sorry, which way we're doing things?
Go ahead, Jaya.
Sorry, let me get to it. Says, "Councilmembers and Mayor Williams, I am writing to provide public comment on the special use permit application for the proposed cellular tower on the city council agenda for May 12th, 2025. If possible, I would like these comments to be read aloud into the record. After nearly 30 years in Urbana, I finally felt compelled to speak out on a city council issue. Until now, I've either trusted the city's process or assumed my input wouldn't matter. In my comment on May 5th, I expressed concern that city staff hadn't fully reviewed zoning regulations related to the proposed tower, particularly those involving lighting. I believe the review had wrongly treated a light pole as an existing tower, which allowed lighting to carry over from the old light pole to the new tower. I later discovered my concern about a lacking review was mistaken. Despite that, the reason for this misunderstanding has revealed a more serious concern. The core issue is how city staff handled the release of two memos regarding zoning compliance for the project. The first memo dated March 20th provided only a brief analysis and was included in the April 17th meeting packet, which was made available to both the Plan Commission and the public. A second, more comprehensive memo was released on April 17th, included a full zoning review containing a lighting analysis, but it was not shared with the public before the meeting. Instead, it was sent to a select group, including commission members, the tower applicant, and a school district representative. The public didn't see the second memo until it was silently added to the packet for the May 5th Committee of the Whole meeting nearly two weeks after the Plan Commission had already approved the project. The first memo, which was the only information available to the public before the vote, led to my initial misunderstanding. It described the new tower as one that would replace an existing light tower on an athletic field. This language made it particularly frustrating when at the May 5th meeting, Mr. Ritchie remarked that nothing ever, nobody ever said the light pole was a tower, even though his first memo clearly described it that way. City staff completed their zoning review on April 17th and shared their final analysis with a limited group the same day. That evening, the Plan Commission introduced the item, reviewed it, invited public comment, and approved the tower, all in a single meeting. The public with access only to the initial memo was left with incomplete and potentially misleading information. As a result, anyone else following the issue had no meaningful opportunity to understand or respond to the zoning of the project before the vote took place. The bigger concern here is too cheered access to information. City staff provided a limited version of the review to the public while offering the more complete version only to decision makers and the interested stakeholders in the decision. This withholding of information fell short of the transparency and fairness that Urbana residents expect undermining public trust. The rapid pace of the approval process suggests it may have been driven by a deadline set by the applicant. Regardless of the reason, the outcome was the same. Timing prevented the public from being properly informed before the commission voted. Since the zoning review wasn't completed until the day of the meeting, the appropriate course of action would have been to delay the vote and continue the hearing. This would have given the public a chance to receive the full information and provide input. Instead, the project was approved rapidly without an opportunity for meaningful community participation. I also remain concerned about the proposed lighting on the tower and continue to believe a waiver is necessary. In my view, staff focused too much on the intended purpose of the ordinance and not enough on its actual language, creating unnecessary legal ambiguity. However, I also believe that a Plan Commission meeting is the proper venue for a full discussion of this concern. Given how this process was handled, I respectfully asked the city council to require the Plan Commission to hold a proper public hearing. The public was given only partial and potentially misleading information, while a more complete analysis was shared privately with select and financially interested parties. This created an uneven process that lacked transparency and fairness. The process did not reflect the values of open, inclusive government that Urbana residents expect and deserve. Approving the project before the full information was made public denied the community a real opportunity to understand the issue and provide input. Holding a new hearing with all relevant documents shared in advance would give the public a fair chance to participate. It would also help maintain trust in the city zoning process. This issue deserves a full and open review before moving forward. Sincerely, Tom Schroeder, resident word for.
Thank you. There any other letters that are being requested to read into the record? All right, not seeing any. I will read the proclamation that we gave this morning for National Police Week. If I can have chief or deputy chief come up? All right. Whereas, "There are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including..." Let's start over. "Whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Urbana Police Department. And whereas, the city of Urbana recognizes the vital role our 51 active law enforcement officers play in ensuring the security, well-being, and stability of our community. And whereas, the officers of the Urbana Police Department serve our community with courage and commitment, often placing themselves in harm's way to protect the safety and well-being of others. And whereas, National Police Week observed annually serves as a time to honor the contributions and sacrifices made by law enforcement officers throughout the nation. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, during this week, we pay tribute to those officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty and express our profound gratitude to those who continue to serve with unwavering dedication and honor. And whereas, we recognize that partnership between law enforcement and the community is fundamental to fostering trust, understanding, and cooperation in creating a safer society." Now, therefore, I, DeShawn Williams, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week in the City of Urbana. Thank you, sir. Very good. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, let me see here where we... Next item is council input and communications. Are there any council members wishing to provide input? No? All right. We will move on to the next item. It's reports and standing committees. There are none. All right. Y'all making this easy. All right. Next, we have our items from Committee of the Whole. So Ms. Chandra.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, on the consent agenda, I move for approval ordinance number 2025-05-014 and ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance. amend section 6-5.b for clarity and to update regulations allowing stairs to encroach and require yards, Plan Case Number 2500-T-25.
Second. I'm sorry. Seeing none, we can move on?
Yeah.
All right, so we need to bring that to a vote then. I'm sorry. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Nope. Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi.
Here. I mean, yes.
Councilmember Colasetti.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry.
Yes.
Next item on the, from the Committee of the Whole on the regular agenda is ordinance number 2025-05-015 and ordinance approving a special use permit at 102 East Michigan Avenue, Plan Case Number 2501-SU-25, DRA Properties LLC.
Second.
Excuse me, while Marcus is getting settled in, I did want to sort of respond and make some clarifications based on that. That's kind of crackly. Okay. Based on the email that was received. So we did, we issued a, or we handed out a supplemental memo to Plan Commission and made copies available to the public at the Plan Commission meeting during the public hearing on April 17th. The intent of that supplemental memo was to allow the Plan Commission to follow along with the staff presentation and to provide more detail on specific items in the zoning ordinance. We did not send that out in advance nor to a select group of people. We made all copies available at the same time at the Plan Commission meeting, as I stated. That's standard procedure when we have additional information or additional things we want to share. Now, we didn't need to provide this in writing, but we thought that, we chose to so that the Plan Commission would have that in front of them to help them make a more informed decision. So I just wanted to state that.
Just another follow-up question regarding that email. Was the public hearing noticed properly?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Kevin, but was the more detailed information different before the Plan Commission than it was in front of the public? I know you said it was provided to the public, but it was at the last very second, and the claim is they would not have likely, the public would not have likely seen it. Is there differences between the two memos? Obviously.
Yeah, yeah, it had additional information in it, and like I said, we presented it, or we provided it to everyone all at the same time.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, were there any additional questions? Seeing as though there are none, do we now, as clerk, will you call the roll?
Sure. Unless there's not a presentation correct.
Did we have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion by Councilmember Bishop, seconded by Councilmember Colasetti, to approve ordinance number 2025-05-015, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 102 East Michigan Avenue, Plan Case Number 2501-SU-25, DRA Properties LLC. So, Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Present.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Right, that motion passes. All right. The next item is reports and special committees. Seeing as though there are none, we will move on to next item being reports of officers. All right, Mr. Kevin, is coming up? No? Okay, never mind. I apologize, I thought you were giving them. All right, seeing as though there are none, the next item we have is mayoral, mayoral staff reapportments. The council, they should have received the background information on the appointees two weeks ago, and I would just say, you know, before we get started, you know, I wanted to have the opportunity to work with each individual, being presented to you today, recognizing that, you know, the past, past may not have, you know, been exactly what everyone, you know, may have wanted, you know, things to look like. But, you know, for me, I said this was an opportunity, you know, for me to just have that chance to work with everyone. You know, my goal is to provide a fair chance, you know, for everyone to succeed under my leadership, and that, you know, that's essentially why I presented, you know, the names and folks that I, that I put before you here today. But I do want to make something, you know, something clear, that, you know, while these individuals are being reappointed, you know, continued service will obviously depend on, you know, performance, right? And their performance aligning with our vision, you know, for the city's future. If necessary, I've said from the start, you know, that, you know, we'll make the necessary adjustments to ensure that we, you know, stay that course, but it's my sincere hope that we can all work together in ensuring that we, you know, provide the greatest service possible for the good of our city. So with that, I guess, before we start, I would like, I would actually prefer that we, you know, do these, you know, one at a time, if we can, you know, divide the question, if that's okay? That way, we can just knock it out.
Do we have to make a motion for that?
Any member may request to divide the question because it's presented as an omnibus, so it's privileged. It doesn't need a second or a vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Sharice.
I would particularly like to be able to have a discussion regarding the Human Resources and Finance Department, as well as Elizabeth Hannon's role as interim city administrator.
Yes, they are separate items on the agenda. I know it's kind of a long one, but the separate position for interim city administrator actually appears under two, mayoral staff appointment, since it is not a reapportment in that capacity, so it will be a separate motion and vote, so there will be separate questions and discussion for that.
Okay. My issue, though, deals more with the amount of consolidated power at that, with that particular, those positions, the CFO, human resources, and city administrator.
Sure. We can...
And though it's interim.
Sure, and I, we can, you can discuss that at either of those appointments on the agenda.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
All right. Thank you for the question. So we'll jump into it. So Human Rights and Equity Officer Carla Boyd. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve the appointment of Carla Boyd as Human Rights and Equity Officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. That's motion by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Is there any discussion?
Uh, thanks, sorry, I had a procedural kind of question popped up here. Sorry for not bringing this up ahead of time, too. But what I recall from our change to the city code was that mayoral appointments not to exceed two years or the term of the mayor, and just checking that we're okay that this is like just slightly over two years?
The current terms go through June 30th this year, was my understanding, so this appointment would not be effective until July 1, 2025, so the term that you are appointing to tonight would not exceed two years. We're just visiting them a month ahead of their expiration.
Okay, thank you. So it's, there's an implied that they're all from July 1st to June 30th. Thank you.
That is correct. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Present.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Next is Information Technology Manager, Thomas Webb. Is there a motion for approval?
I move approval of Thomas Webb as Information Technology Manager for a term ending June 30th, 2027.
I'll second.
Motion made by James, seconded by Chandra. Is there any discussion? Seeing as though none, clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. All right, next, the city attorney, Matthew Rocheley. Let me see here, sorry. Is there someone willing to make a motion for approval?
Move to approve Matthew Rocheley as city attorney.
Second.
Motion by Sharice, seconded by James. Is there any discussion?
I would like to say that I think Matthew has been doing a great job. He's always available for questions, even here in the meeting and outside of the meeting, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Sharice? Oh, no? All right. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Motion passes. Right next, Human Resources and Finance Director, Elizabeth Hannon. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of Elizabeth Hannon as Human Resources and Finance Director/CFO for term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All right, moved by James, seconded by Jaya. Is there any discussion? Sharice?
I want to make it clear that I think Elizabeth is a great finance director, and she's done amazing things as finance director. I think that my issue is that she's over human resources, she's over finance directing, and she's going to be, has to be, serve interim as city administrator, and that's a lot of consolidation of one person, for one person to have regarding the workings of the city. What I would appreciate is that if we are in fact going to vote for her to be interim, and I understand your needs totally, that this is a need, but however, what I really want to understand and what I really want to keep in, 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 for people to understand and comprehend is that if, if this is going to, this is her, her position that will be for two years. Interim, and I know this just from watching our previous chief of police who did interim chief for like two years before he became chief. And so I want to make it clear that this is, that her interim position is in fact no longer than a particular amount of time.
Correct. I can tell you, there's no, nothing in my mind that plans to go two years with a search in that regard. It is solely for that, that duration of time, and, and as far as I'm concerned, I am wanting to, you know, to cut that time down as, as quick as possible, so that we're not dragging this out. You know, the, the thought around that was for, you know, with this in particular, you know, she's going to have to go back to something, you know, and that was essentially the reasoning of the why in this regard.
So what I was wondering is that while she is serving as an interim city administrator, will there be someone that is her deputy that will be also, that she can delegate?
Yes.
Finance and human resource?
Yep. Those duties have already, they've already started doing that, so they've delegated that amongst the team already, so yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Thank you. I want to speak in, in favor of this, even if you look at the interim city administrator appointment, it is for a year, it is not for two years. It's been clear in the messaging I've seen from Mayor Williams that this is a step while we conduct a search to find a new city administrator. I can't imagine anyone who's more aware of all the details that would need to be taken care of in that, in the time it takes to do that search. Sometimes you can do that kind of search in a couple of months, sometimes it takes six months. I think it's appropriate for Elizabeth to serve in that CFO, HR, finance director position in the meantime, because I do know she has team members that can help with that lift, and so I'm, I'm very comfortable with this option. I think it's, I think it's a good option. I think it ensures that we can do a search process for the city administrator under our procedures as a city, and, and that's what we should do. It doesn't make, doesn't put anyone in a position where they feel like they have to rush to do it. Someone can be properly vetted and everybody be comfortable with it, so I'm supportive of it.
Any further discussion? I appreciate the question. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Present.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. All right, next, we have Fire Chief, Mr. Kent Demond Dade.
I move approval of appointment of Fire Chief Demond Dade for a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Second.
Echo to Jaya.
I think it was actually Grace that was quicker on that second.
That was me and Sharice at a draw there.
All right. Motion by Chandra, seconded by Grace. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. All right, next is Deputy Fire Chief Tal Prendergast. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval for Deputy Fire Chief Tal Prendergast for a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion by Jaya, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion has passed. All right, next, we have Deputy Fire Chief Stephen Doggett, term ending June 30th, 2027.
I'd like to move a motion, make a motion that Steve, Stephen, Stephen, Steve Doggett, term ending June 30th, 2027, for Deputy Fire Chief.
Second.
By Sharice, seconded by Grace. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. All right. Next is Chief of Police Larry D. Boone, term ending June 30th, 2027.
I move approval of Larry Boone as Chief of Police for a term ending June 30, 2027.
A second.
All right. Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? All right. Jaya?
Yeah, um, so I want to state, like, I, there have definitely been moments over the last few years that Chief Boone and I have had significant disagreements, but I think that this is a city that can work across, across disagreements, and I'm trusting that, um, with Mayor Williams' leadership, that we can work collectively towards a vision for what safety in the city can look like collaboratively.
Any other discussion? Sharice? No? All right. Um, seeing as though none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
No.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right. That motion passes. All right. We will now move to Deputy Chief of Police David Dave Smizer, um, term ending June 30th, 2027.
Move for Deputy Chief of Police Dave Smizer to, um, to renew his term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chandra. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing as though there is none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Present.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right. That motion passes. All right, next is Public Works Director Timothy Cowan, term ending, uh, June 30th, 2027.
I move for the reappointment of Timothy Tim Cowan, term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion made by Sharice, seconded by Grace. Um, any discussion? All right. Seeing none, uh, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right. That passes. All right, next, um, Deputy Public Works Director Vincent Vince Gustafson, uh, with the term ending June 30th, 2027. Have a motion for approval?
I move approval of, um, Vince Gustafson for Deputy Public Works Director, term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All right. Moved by Chandra, seconded by, uh, James. There any discussion?
I would like to say one thing.
Yes. Sharice?
Tim Cowan has been, um, probably one, one of the most dedicated people that I've seen as far as working to, um, keep the infrastructure of the City of Urbana intact, as well as have a, um, a, um, in, not an invoice, but a, a, a list of things that need, not only need to be fixed, but what's been repaired and so on and so forth. He's, and I just want to say, um, he's been a pleasure to work with, and I've had the, uh, the honor of working with him the past few years, and that he's been a, a pleasure and a delight to work with.
Thank you. All right. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yep. This is for the Deputy Public Works Director, uh, Vince Gustafson.
Vince, too.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
That passes. All right. Um, next is City Engineer John Zeeman, uh, with a term ending June 30th, 2027. Motion?
Move approval of John Zeeman for City Engineer, term ending June 30, 2027.
A second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. All right. And now, we have, uh, the mayor's staff appointment, uh, for interim city administrator, uh, which is Elizabeth Hannon, with a term ending June 30th, 2026, or until position is filled, whichever comes sooner. May I?
Kent, point-
Yes, sir.
Point order. Um, what is the start date for this? Immediately?
Yes.
Okay. I think we should be, since we implied that in the others, we should say it expressly in this one, so I'll make that motion, if that's okay.
Yes.
I move approval of Elizabeth Hannon as interim city administrator for a term starting May 12th and running through June 30th, 2026, or until the position is filled, whichever is sooner.
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by Jaya. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Uh, Mr. Evans, Chris?
Um, Mayor, could you maybe, uh, just briefly tell us what the search process will be?
You know, that is a great question. So, it's no secret, you know, I, I had someone in mind that I felt would be amazing in this position that had the, the, uh, the best interests of the city. Uh, for me, I still plan to, you know, do a smaller search, you know, as far, I'm not, I'm not intending to do a nationwide search. I will say that, you know, on the record. Um, I do plan to do a smaller search so that we can have an opportunity for folks within the, not only city hall, but outside, just in the community as well, to have an opportunity